All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April thirtieth, Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Education meeting. The time now is seven thirty. It's this time on here entertaining motion to reconvene in open session. It's been a while, Mr. Carlson, to reconvene in open session. All those favors they got? All those polls same right? Have attention. There are none. Roll call, please, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Belak.
Here.
Ms. Franklin Herman.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Malika Jernigan.
Here.
Ms. Nina.
Here.
Mr. Todd.
Present.
We have one.
Thank you. We'll announce him with your flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Thank you. We'll now have our MTE SD student report. Student representative report, Ms. Robb.
Good evening, Montgomery. This April has been a great month for the students of Montgomery High School. April is Autism Acceptance Month, an Arab-American heritage month. And MHS students have been fostering a spirit of inclusion and respect throughout this season. MHS students are also wishing a peaceful time for all who have observed religious holidays that pass over in the heat of this month. Earlier in the month, the MHS band orchestra had a phenomenal chance to travel to Oahu, Hawaii. During the trip, students got the opportunity to play at Pearl Harbor honoring those who loved their lives on December seventh, nineteen forty-one. Students also had the opportunity to go on many fun dates, explore local beaches, truly take a journey with your friends. The Montgomery baseball team took a rewarding trip to Myrtle Beach over spring break, during which both the junior varsity and varsity teams volunteered at the local weebank. Both teams spent hours of their time volunteering at the local country weebank, packing meals for individuals in the community who face food insecurity. Our spring sports season started full swing, and we're wishing our student athletes the best of luck. Congratulations to MHS seniors Claire Long and Max Mahoney for being named our two thousand and twenty-four Skyline Conference Scholar Athletes. This month, MHS senior Victoria Leopold earned our school our River Runnin' certification. Having partnered with the Watershed Institute, Victoria earned this certification by completing and having MHS teach lessons on water quality, water conservation, native habitats, and by organizing a street rate of outreach to the public following significant flooding. This is a wonderful example of our students' initiative to help a community greener and cleaner, greener and cleaner place. MHS also welcomed a new addition to our campus in the home of cashew boxes. A cashew is a small hawk-like bird that is currently identified as threatened, the threatened species in our area. These boxes provide a home to these animals who are being threatened due to the loss of their habitats. Photography teacher Ms. Palachek has been leading the initiative in partnership with the Friends of Hope World Value in space, recently adding a spy camera to check on the progress of the cashwells. The information gathered from these birds will be recorded to the state, and hopefully information on how many of the fly bags currently will hatch. Last week, the MHS Jump Start Club hosted a successful Dino Day fundraiser. Mr. McAvady, Mrs. Tabago, and Coach Cortezo could all be seen on different days during unit of lunch wearing inflatable dinosaur costumes. Students then had the opportunity to vote with their wallets on who wore it best, and all the money raised goes to fund college scholarships for the Montgomery students. MHS's South Asian Cultural Club, also known as Sensation, hosted an amazing showcase last week with traditional Indian dances, singing, skits, and fun for all. We also recently celebrated Take Your Child For Work Day, which pure-two students and the future educators of America Club pushed a fun-filled day for children of staff and faculty members. Overall, we're looking forward to a great month of joy and success with the upcoming hackathon and maybe marking mental health in this month. Thank you.
All right, thank Ms. Robb. Mr. Trent.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. So today is the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget. I'm happy to say for the board, this is pretty much the same presentation we had in March because after the board meeting, the next day I submitted it to the county. Went through the county review, the county superintendent review, and they accepted it as we had submitted it. I will go through the slides just for anybody who missed or if there was any questions. So the budget development process started in October. Administration worked on it through January and March nineteenth. What I was referring to is when the board saw the tentative budget as a presentation for the first time, voted yes for submission. The submission date was March twentieth. The next date up on the calendar is today, which is the public hearing, and we are going to accept it. As a review, the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five tax levy was increased by two percent. That was the max allowable by law without any other adjustments. The board did not take any other adjustments that would increase the taxes greater than two percent. So the tax rate was raised from eighty-seven point three million to eighty-nine million. All of these slides will be available on the website tomorrow, as well as the user friendly project. So tomorrow morning around eight o'clock, they'll be on the website so everybody can review at that point. Our total recommended budget, as you can see, for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five is one hundred and fourteen million. That's what was approved in March. That's what we're approving tonight. It is a decrease. We talked about the budget fund balance. The board made the decision, which is responsible to bring the fund balance down a bit. Plus, we are losing the HESR funds that the districts have been using in their budgets for the past few years. That does not exist for this budget. That leads to some of the reduction that we see right there. The major sources of revenue, local taxes, I think most people know, state aid, which we did receive a good increase in state aid, and then some of the reserves, capital reserve, maintenance reserve, and fund balance. So you can see the pie chart. Obviously, most of our revenue distribution is made up from local taxes, eighty-four percent, and then the other big part we're seeing is the state. These are our appropriations. You can see the indication of how they increased or decreased into this year's budget. The biggest drivers of our appropriations are going to be instruction. See regular instruction, special instruction, and also benefits. You can see also some of the other of the pie chart, operation, maintenance of the plant, the facility, security, all that as well, as well as support services. Speaking of the major drivers of our budget, salaries make up sixty-one point five percent. Benefits take up twenty-one point three percent. Those are predetermined costs for the most part, so when we start building a budget, that's, you know, we're already starting with the two point eight percent already allocated. Here's the additions that the school is including this year in the budget. Five paraprofessionals, a transportation nurse, a computer technician, two psychologists for the STAR program, a BCBA teacher, autism teacher, and two new safety and security coordinators. Projects, we have projects in the works, many projects. We have security improvements that we plan to do. We have playground equipment upgrades. We're looking at upgrading Montgomery High School sign on front. I think that was running its course a bit. We're looking at upgrading the facility and transportation facilities. And then the big one that's hanging over still are the rod grants, which provided forty percent of state funds to match our sixty percent. We're going to be moving forward with some of those this year. So this is new from last month. These are the motions you're looking at in the agenda today. There are six of them as they pertain to the budget. The first is the number we spoke about, one hundred and fourteen million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. That is the total proposed budget. The amount that we're raising for taxes is eighty-nine million, forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty. That was on a previous slide, but that is the breakdown between Montgomery and Rocky Hill, which is a calculation that is provided by the state and is given via the software that I did double-check as well with the county VA just to make sure, but it is, it is correct. So it's in the software, we're good to go there. The amount that we raise for taxes, the reason there's disparity there is we have pre-debt merger and post debt, uh, pre-merger debt and post-merger debt. And Montgomery bears most of the pre-merger debt, so that's why you see the discrepancy there. This was not in the last motion, or there was not a motion in March, sorry. The county VA said I have to have that in there. All this indicates that they are not using the healthcare adjustment this year for the budget. So whether you use it or not, you have to have the budget in there. And then the last two motions are the maintenance reserve and the capital reserve. This is a very typical motion. It's done every year. It is to move monies from the maintenance reserve, the capital reserve into the budget. This is our one chance to do that without special permission. This money usually goes towards upgrading facilities, upgrading the security features, maybe replacing equipment for grounds, meeting trucks, things like that. So that's really what that money is for. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Board members, any questions? All right, there are none, thank you. Superintendent, Superintendent McLaughlin.
Good evening, everyone. On tonight's agenda, we have for approval a new director of special services. As you may know, for the last two years, we have been working with an interim director, and interims are only allowed to work for two school years, and we have secured a tenure track person. She's here tonight. I just want to introduce her to everyone. This is Michelle DeRima.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to say thank you for welcoming me tonight. I'm very excited to be approved and really take over the lead again here at Montgomery to really work with all the stakeholders and all of the learning community, continue the great work that's going on. So thank you. It's nice to meet everybody.
April has been a big science month throughout the district. At Orchard Hill, the school celebrated the solar eclipse in style with a school-wide viewing on April eighth. First graders completed special projects involving ladybugs, and they anxiously await the hatching of their baby chicks. Adding to the life science lessons, butterflies are expected to visit the kindergarten very soon. Orchard Hill is celebrating Autism Acceptance Month rather than focusing on differences. We have been focusing on opportunities for students to celebrate their similarities with each other. Theme days included Magnificent Mine Monday and Century Friendly Thursday. The Montgomery Elementary School PTA, with the support from the greater community, hosted International Night on Friday, April twenty-sixth, for Orchard Hill and Village families. It was a beautiful celebration of the diversity in our schools. Guests enjoyed a cultural performance showcase, visited classrooms to learn about various countries and customs, and enjoyed an international menu provided by food truck vendors. Fourth graders recently visited the State House as part of their social studies civics unit and participated in an incredible seeing-eye-dog assembly, which started the school-wide fundraisers, had pennies per puppies. Thanks to the work of Ms. Glover, K four math supervisor, Village was also able to safely see the solar eclipse after learning all about the eclipses in the classroom. The Montgomery Shade Tree Committee hosted our thirty-eighth Annual Arbor Day with presentations in all third-grade classrooms. Each student received an overcup oak to plant at home. On April twenty-fourth, rising fifth graders visited LMS during the day, and their parents were able to visit the school in the evening. This Wednesday, rising third graders from Orchard Hill will visit Village, and their parents will join us also in the same evening. These programs assist with the easing of transitions between the buildings and build excitement for the upcoming year. LMS is part of their school's production of Finding Nemo. The weekend was a huge success for the LMS community. The students provided a great entertainment for the community and dazzled the audience at every show. The overall sentiment is it was better the broadway. Thanks to the expert finding and amazing generosity of the LMS PTO, the second student dance of the year, the Glow Dance, was a huge success. Once again, students attended in droves and danced the night away. LMS is extremely grateful for the tremendous support from the PTO. At UMS, the last Cougar Care Day took place. The theme was All In, with wellness, inclusion, and self-advocacy. The guest presenter shared his message of being all in with our thoughts and actions within our community. At UMS, there was a wonderful unified week of inclusion, which ignited empathy and embraced diversity, included a student assembly and themes for each day. The Student Council hosted the special guest Take Your Child For Work Day, and members of the UMS staff led activities throughout the day, throughout the district. Each school did that. It was wonderful. Here we go for the high school, and I'm not overlapping this time. Some exciting news from the Science Olympiad. Our MHS Science Olympiad team is ranked number one in the state of New Jersey and has secured a coveted spot in the National Science Olympiad Tournament at Michigan State University next month. In addition to the amazing team, they have exciting individual competitors who are competing at the highest levels. Senior student Arjum Sharma was one of the two thousand and twenty-four New Jersey State Champion MHS Science Olympiad captains. He is an accomplished chemist and will be continuing his education next year at the University of Pennsylvania's Viper Program, which invites thirty of the top U Penn admin teams each year. Viper students cultivate a comprehensive understanding of foundational science and its practical engineering applications. Graduates of this program are awarded a Bachelor of Arts from the School of Arts and Sciences and a Bachelor of Science in Engineering from the School of Engineering and Applied Sciences. While at Montgomery High School, Arjum attended the Washington University Chemistry Tournament and placed third overall in the individual section and placed first on the chemistry exam. It was forensic applications of chemistry. His team, JPH Chemistry Olympiad Two, placed first in the team round, first in the team round, and third in the Breaking Bones exam, live-scored rapid-fire format, and first-place overall. At the ACS Chemistry Olympiad, Arjum was the two thousand and twenty-four North Jersey medalist and a two thousand and twenty-four National Chemistry Olympiad. The results are still pending. Junior student Serise Prominek is a key member of the Montgomery High School Science Olympiad team. While not excelling in competitions outside of the school, he is often found to be working with MHS math instructors as a student learning facilitator in advanced mathematics courses. Serise is a two thousand and twenty-three F equals M A Physics Olympiad semifinalist and was selected as one of the twenty students in the U.S. to participate from May thirty-first to June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at the U.S. Physics Team Training Camp at the University of Maryland. Junior student Max Shing is one of the two thousand and twenty-four New Jersey State Champion MHS Science Olympiad captains. He is also one of the forty students in the U.S. invited to the U.S. Earth Science Olympiad Training Camp. For the U.S. Biology Olympiad, we had two Montgomery High School juniors who have earned semifinal exam recognition levels of academic excellence, Aranya Padmavati and Tendan Wang. Awesome job for all of those students, so proud of them.
All right, thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. We'll now transition into committee and representative reports.
Good evening, board members, committee members, administrators, faculty, staff who are here, who are watching the videos later. Good evening, and just want to share some of the good things happening around the MTA and our schools. We had the honor of promoting Earth Day earlier in April, which is actually still in April, still hanging on there on the last day, by giving out some basil planters at the upper middle school. So in back, parents and children invited to just drive around and get a free planter and plant that for Earth Day. We continue with our virtual read-aloud series in April. There was a science-related theme about finding a cure for malaria, a real inspiring book about science. In May, we have two upcoming ones. One is about the Olympic medalist Nathan Chen, and another, a story of a grandmother of June teeth, Opal Lee, and what it means to be free. So another interesting and inspiring read there. And all of these, anyone participating in the virtual read-al does actually get a copy of the book that we delivered to the buildings as well. And we have our biggest event coming up. I stole a little poster of it first, which is Mary Poppins. This is our annual Music From The Heart event, where we have numerous, numerous staff members, children, community members, administrators participate, and it's all for a great cause, put on a wonderful show for the community, but also to raise scholarship funds for our graduating seniors. And we'll be presenting those pretty soon with the rest of our scholarships for our graduating seniors. We've been doing it for over twenty years now and have, we'll give the tally later on in the upcoming board meeting, but thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. It's a wonderful cause that we, as the MTA, and I'll get the new name for the, what used to be the Band Parents Association, it's the MHS Instructional Music Parents Association. So it's quite a mouthful, but we partner up and we give out scholarships to our high school seniors. So it's taking place at Montgomery High School in the Performing Arts Center, wonderful auditorium. You can get tickets online by going to nftth.budis.com, and you can also purchase tickets at the door. I don't usually hope for rain, but usually a rainy Saturday will bring out more people because games are canceled and brings out a full house. We really do want a full house to sell all those tickets and give out more money because every penny that we raise goes towards the scholarships. So it's a wonderful thing. There are two shows, so if you can't make one, you can get the other, one at two P.M. and one at seven thirty P.M. So you don't want to miss. It's a fun day to go out with family and friends, and it's a big draw because you'll get to usually see your children who have been in schools for a while, get to see people from all over the district performing, singing, dancing, and I can guarantee you that you will not see me singing and dancing, so that's a plus, but you'll see some other very, very talented people that are doing it, and I'm glad that we have them, otherwise you might be forced to see me do it. Those are all the good things going on. Have a good night.
What is the date of that?
It is May eleventh. It's a Saturday, a rain day, right? It's more of a rain day. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle. We'll now move into board member delegate representative reports that we have been in this evening.
So I can start with the Somerset County School Board Association. That meeting took place on April fifteenth. It was wonderful to see the Somerset County Teacher of the Year being named, Middlesbrough Teacher from North Plainfield, who made a lovely speech about her contribution to the educational system, as well as what was memorable from that meeting was certifications and milestones. It was amazing to see the amount of people that contribute to the educational system for like a really long time. I think that was one twenty-five years and one twenty years, so very impressive. And the last most important business was that the election and installation of Somerset County Board of Directors delegates and alternates were finalized and selected. So that's the update from that. And I also have an update from Somerset County Educational Services Commission.
And you can interrupt me for one second?
Yeah.
On the Somerset County School Board Association, I think Anya is being a little remiss and a little humble. She was appointed second vice president of the Somerset County School Board Association.
Thank you so much.
Credit for credit, let's do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. On the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, it was a pretty short meeting for a change. I think our first one that Dorian and I attended was quite extensive, but budget was in the topic, so that's expected. I think the contract negotiations have finally have been completed. There is some investment being made in the policy, which I'm glad to see being on the policy committee and trying to drive improvement in that place. So they're actually going to automate that process for them, and then final budget was officially approved, but that was just of the meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Anya, if you don't mind, can you just give me a brief overview of what the Educational Services Commission does with their purposes?
Yeah, so Educational Services Commission is essentially a school that serves some of the children that perhaps are unable to function within the standard school system. So often, kids from different schools are being directed into that facility for educational purposes. What's really wonderful about Educational Services Commission is that they really try to drive a lot of different skill sets. So if you go to a VOTech school, you kind of get certificates for different aspects of things if you're interested in cosmetology or engineering or whatever it is, you walk out of there with some, with some sort of certificate. This particular school really focuses on bringing kids into, giving them ability to function in the society after they leave the school district, not only educationally, but also giving them some skill set so they can be successful. Actually, an example was given of a young man who, in the mechanical workshop, was able to walk out of there and get a job at one of the local tire places based on the skills that he has learned there, right? So also, the superintendent and assistant superintendent are fantastic folks, really investing in now cosmetology room for young women that they can learn certain skills. And it's really, it's really warm and nice to see that a lot of those people either grew up together, they worked together at some point, they have some sort of connection, and they help each other out to make sure that schools like this become successful and kids have the most opportunity available to them. So it's a pleasure serving on that commission.
Thank you. Board member Frank Owen.
Yes. For the municipal alliance, so May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so the municipal alliance in partnership with the Montgomery County School District is conducting a roundtable conversation on Thursday, May second, from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Montgomery Upper Middle School Media Center, and the topic is on screens and stress, understanding the digital impact on children's well-being, the discussion about the impacts of smartphones, social media, and spending time on the mental health of our children, learn more about what we can do to mitigate the risks and foster a healthier relationship with technology. The presenters that evening would be Cory Delgado, Mark Carty, Scott Machuda, Stephanie Lakenhour, and members of the Youth Action Board. There would also be table resources and mental health professionals available prior to the event for people who are seeking additional information. So that's Thursday, May second, six-thirty to thirty, Montgomery Upper Middle School Media Center.
Are there any other board member delegate representative reports? Board member Dowling.
Hi, speaking on behalf of Emsepta, there was a meeting on April seventeenth, which was held virtually as a committee. It sounds like there's about to be quite a bit of turnover in terms of the tenured people that have been on that committee because of their children graduating, but there was a real pride and a real urgency to strengthen the lines of communication between SEPTA and Emsepta, excuse me, and the rest of the district. They feel that there needs to be decent representation in terms of teaching, teaching staff that can come to the meetings, that can be a voice, and can really connect Emsepta with the rest of the school. And so I said that I would certainly follow on that lead and make sure that the rest of the board was privy to that idea, that they very much want a voice, want to participate fully in the district, and feel that there is a lack of representation at this point. So looking for volunteers to really step in and take leadership there. Much needed. They are obviously a really important part of our district, and we need to make sure that they are well represented.
Can I add on on that?
Sure.
They also hosted the Springling Dance for our, through Emsepta. It was held at the Elks, and it was a lovely event. I think that we all wanted there to be more turnout, but a few of the paraprofessionals did come, and it was really very enjoyable to see students dancing and having a great time with some of their beloved teachers. And I know that Emsepta also wants to reiterate that they have funds for teachers who are part of the Emsepta, and so they could then apply for grant opportunities, and they just really want to open whatever doors they can for participation, open communication. So I held decoration committee for that, so that's what I knew about.
Well done. Are there any more board representative reports? All right, there are none. We'll move into board committee reports. First up, Assessment, Recovery, and Instruction Committee. Board member Dowling.
Thank you. Sorry, we met, we met on April nineteenth, and that was both virtual and in person. And we very quickly went through the upcoming dates for the NJSLA testing, happening at different times, starting at VES on May sixth to May tenth, LMS May thirteenth to May seventeenth, UMS May ninth, tenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth.
to May seventeenth, UMS, May ninth, tenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, and at MHS on April twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and May first and second. It will take a few months to get those results, and Dr. Young will report on those results in the fall when they come in. The Equitable Instruction Walkthrough took place in conjunction with content area supervisors. They went on classroom visits in all five schools, and they focused on the crosswalk between UDL and Equity, areas of strength, areas to improve, and next steps regarding teacher practices in the classroom. The overall learning environment and levels of engagement were discussed at the culmination of each school visit. The district is continuing to grow in the individualization of learning, creating a structure that supports student efficacy and finding ways to help students develop learning stamina. Next, Ms. Heather Pinobidi had a wonderful presentation about the STAR Mental Health Intervention Program expansion that is currently in place in the, sorry, in the high school, and it is looking to have an impact at LMS and UMS. There is a comprehensive presentation on schoolboard.net, so I encourage everyone to please view that presentation so that you can have a comprehensive understanding of the program. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Just a question on NJSLA testing. Yeah, Cheryl, I know parents are wondering, is that mandatory testing for our school district? It is. And then on the walkthrough, are there any findings yet, or is that something that you're going to be reviewing later on?
They did not report specifically on findings. They just basically talked about what they did when they walked through all five schools and what they were looking for, but they were not specific in terms of, you know, areas of strengths and areas to improve, so I can certainly go back and ask for more clarification.
That would be interesting.
Yep.
Just on this STAR Mental Health Program, I'm not, I know that there's a presentation, but is there just a quick synopsis you can give us of the purpose of the program for the school and how it got started?
I cannot speak to how it got started. You know, I really asked you to go...
Have they married? Can you give us?
Yeah, have they married? Can you talk more? Thank you. That was not the right one to start with. That was not part of the presentation. Sorry, Cheryl. No, don't be sorry.
Because we assess all of our programs, including our special education programs. Many years ago, we were...
Can you hear me now? Yes. The responsibility is to constantly assess our programs for students. And in the area of special education, years ago, we found that we were sending a lot of students to added district placements that had more mental health needs as opposed to a specific learning disability or a physical disability. So we looked at other programs in other buildings, and at that time, we contracted with Effective School Solutions, which we currently still have in the middle school. And we adopted that program, we contracted with them for several years. About four or five years ago, we decided that we can have our own program and we didn't need to contract services, and we could service more children in doing so and have more flexibility with students. The main goal is when students go to a school that is specific to a disability, the goal there would be their mental health would be the priority and the academic second. We felt that we needed to give the children the opportunity because as we all know, any kind of emotional disability may not have anything to do with your academic achievement. So when you go to certain schools for students with disabilities, very specific schools, the academics are maybe a one-size-fits-all. When we did, when we had the ESS program come to us, the students were able to go to their AP classes, go to maybe resource rooms depending on their academic ability, and be with their friends, which is the priority. So the STAR program took over the ESS program, and it's just our staff as opposed to a contracted service. We continue to have ESS at, at the middle schools because then COVID occurred, and when we were looking to switch over, we had a transition. And so we continue to contract with ESS, it's a great program, but we are now looking to move our STAR program down into lower and upper middle school and then have a plan to then bring it to Orchard Village as needed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I had one follow-up on that. You said, Anya, that there were no reported results on the walkthrough, but they told you what they were looking for?
So just in general, areas of strength, areas to improve upon, and then sort of, you know, how to support teaching staff in the classroom? Yep. But I will certainly go back to them and ask for specific examples.
Any other questions for Board Member Dowell?
I have one question actually from Mary. Would you be able to provide more information about the new vendor that appeared on our agenda, the Social Institute? I guess I get, I get the question from the community, and I get the answer to it.
Sure. I'm sorry, to what?
The Social Institute, the program that is on the board agenda. Thank you for asking. May I have a time? I wrote something down. So the Social Institute is an educational resource that Montgomery Middle Schools have been using to address the growing social and emotional needs of the students. TSI is its initials, provides schools with a platform called Win at Social that gives gamified lessons to schools to address important SEL and character ed programs. UMS has used these lessons throughout the school year to address kindly or developmentally appropriate lessons in a fun way. The platform also provides them with the opportunity to use technology in the classrooms to present research, call discussions, and collect input in the style of a game. Additionally, TSI gives resources to share with parents about the many areas of social media and how to support young adults as they grow into adults in the world of tech.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, here are none. Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee. One more if you want.
So the Operations, Finance, and Facilities Committee met on Friday, twenty eighth of April twenty-sixth. The committee met, Drew Luthersley, the district's new supervisor of maintenance and grounds. Drew has been evaluating the maintenance needs of our grounds and buildings since he started. He praised the commitment and eagerness to help of our maintenance employees. Drew's hands-on leadership style inspires team building and commitment to quality of work. He actually just works on the grounds and he's helping everyone on the grounds just to fix things, so he's very hands-on. Drew has identified projects that require immediate attention. For example, his team is working on addressing the issue with periodic sink and toilet outages in our schools. Our grounds also, he also took care of our grounds, he prepared a lot for the, for the prep season. Next, Dwayne Washington, Transportation Supervisor, reported on the school bus safety. Our buses recently underwent a state safety inspection. The safety bus inspection is not twice a year, one in May, one in September. Fifty-two buses were inspected and eight buses had to be re-inspected. Our district mechanic properly addressed the identified fails and all buses had the inspection. Dwayne also shared with the committee that recent evaluation of the internal operating procedures identified an opportunity for improvement. His team worked on putting in place new standard operating procedures to ensure proper and safe operations of the transportation department. The business administration administrator confirmed that the budget was reviewed and accepted as submitted by the county. The budget is to be narrowed down to nine, and it's the same as, as the proposed budget presented last month. The committee discussed pending and planned for state facilities projects. The new Orchard Hill playground project is moving forward as planned. The administration is evaluating options to address the road leaks in high school because currently the solar panels on the roof make the proper repairs impossible. The administration is evaluating the terms of the solar panel lease to do the cost analysis of terminating the lease program. The maintenance trailer used by the maintenance employees have been decommissioned. The employees have been provided a break room and nice medium space room in the business administration building. The transportation trailer is being evaluated, and the administration is gathering information about the cost of repair versus the cost of replacement. The BH shared the results of the evaluation of the BENACART, which is the prescription management benefit the district subscribes to. The evaluation, the evaluation was prompted by inquiries submitted by the employees. Recent changes implemented in the health insurance industry resulted in a high scrutiny and more frequent requests for additional information and documentation from the doctors and the insured, and of course creates a lot of concerns to all of us. The insured in all industries experience the inconvenience of gathering additional documents to receive insurance coverage. The district administration diligently evaluated and submitted inquiries and concluded that BENACART offers the best for the district prescription coverage.
Just a clarifying question. Can you explain the funding allocation for the non-public technology and the non-public security aid? What is that? It's like three point one. Ah, sorry, let me give you more clarification. It's three point twelve. I can speak to that.
Do you know, script please, Paul.
Thank you.
As part of our funding, we have non-public schools, so approved, state-approved, non-public schools that are in Montgomery Township or Rocky Hill. We get a portion from the government of monies, they just go through us. We have to approve it, meet with them, go through, but it's their money, and they have to use it appropriately, and we're almost like the gatekeeper of the money. So every year we meet with them for their security money, their non-public money, their nursing money, there's a whole bunch of ones that follow the IEDDA grants, so textbooks.
Right, got it. Thank you.
And we have two, right? The Montessori in the Waldorf School in Montgomery.
Better actually. Got it. The money's just coming from...
The state.
The state, it's not, right? And they just are held here.
Yes, we're, yes, we're fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I have a follow-up clarification. Looking at the, the bus failure on the review list, they were, they were tested on three twenty, and then they were retested on three twenty. So does that mean that inspections happened down here? Did they, did they bring them somewhere? I was curious how they, how they got failed and then retested the same day and passed again.
Don't be a pressure ball. Or Jack?
Yes.
Did you say, one more time, you're asking? It might fall out.
Okay, so the...
Asking for the reinspection of the buses, completion of the grounds, or we had to drive the buses for reinspection for another operation.
Could we have to drive the buses to, for reinspection?
Right, so they inspect those here?
The inspections are done on our drive, yes. Okay. They're not being driven.
I have a question or clarification. You spoke about the maintenance crew looking into the school's bathrooms, and that just made me think about the email that we received right now, where's spring ring from our high school principal about the high school bathrooms we were to search. So could you just speak a little bit more about what was the maintenance crew looking at in the district?
So we've been talking about the state of our bathrooms in all schools, which is Eleanor's, Yonkers High School, because there have been reports of outrageous for different reasons. Some of them were because of the vandalism, some of them were because they were, the bathrooms were out because of the wrong action. So what Drew is working on right now is evaluating what exactly is happening, what exactly is causing the failures, because this is something that's within his control. The vandalism is a separate issue that needs to be addressed by the principals and the counselors, so this is not something that the supervisor of maintenance can address. But he did, he identified some potential reasons why some of the students weren't there, so he's on it, so hopefully we'll see if we can get him there.
You guys are always more concerned about our students not being able to use bathrooms, whereas that is an assessing, we should be able to have horrible...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just one last question on the trailer, and I know that it's being evaluated whether to invest in repairs or new. Has there been any further thought as far as some ideas, thoughts on that?
Sure, so we met with the architect. There's the building that is outside of the board office right now, just, I guess, not last week, but the week before, we had the company come in and snake the lines to see, can we get electric? Is the, because there's water in the sewer, but we're not sure how it's fed into there. Can we get water? Can we get sewer? So we had the company come in, they gave the results to the architect. Some of the results are favorable, some not, so we're trying to figure out our options there. So the different options we're looking at, either replacing a new building, maybe a modular trailer, but I think the one that most people prefer across the board would be to fix the existing building, because it's a very good structure, it's very solid, has a locker room in there already, it's actually cleaned up. We'd be, we were with the architect in there, we'd be able to put up a wall, have a break area there, and it would also have, you know, a combination break area and shop for them as well. So the process right now is we're trying to see how do we get the utilities there? The water line looked good, the sewer, we're struggling with the net. Electric, we'll be able to get there. So that's, that's just basically where we're...
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Rowett? Here are none. We'll now move to Policy and Communications Committee. Co-chairs, Willaka Jurnakin and soon to be co-chair Cookie Prigorn.
For Communications.
Want to get started with you, I think.
Yeah. So for the communications side, we did speak about what's going to be on the agenda, actual proposal from the National Schools Public Relations Association. So the scope survey is something that we hope that we will be able to use to get community feedback on the types of communications that they would like to hear from us, or how they want to receive communication from us. So that's on the agenda for approval. We also talked about the timeline on where the strategic plan is. As the superintendent had mentioned, she's working with administrators, please correct me if I'm missing anything, to start role planning and then action planning after that, and hopefully have a summer timeline to get back to board on what goals that they have come up based on the information gathered from strategic planning. And then, I just want to like, get again, retreat, because that would be important to coincide with the goal planning...
Patrick.
...description of the goal planning of the board, so that's...
Thank you. So for policy, there were quite a few policies we reviewed. The policies and regulations, agenda included policies associated with equal employment opportunities as well as anti-discrimination practices. The equal employment policies and regulations were revised to remove the list of protected categories, which is actually very helpful for clarification because it's now referenced with the new expanded list defined by the actual, actual administrative code. So you'll just have a reference to the code, so that cleaned up a lot of the policies that way. Also, Policy two, four, three, one, those were the guidance counseling policy, which was updated to provide some additional details regarding student access to counseling services. In addition to that, we reviewed a concussion policy and regulation, which recently was rewritten to align with the most current recommendations developed by the CDC. I think we've all heard about it through all of our sports fans here. And the, the Policy three, four, two, five, research project and staff members, I think that policy has been actually clarified, which I think it's very helpful because the research projects policy was not clear as far as which need to be presented for approval versus not. Now we'll have a consistent view that all of the research projects, whether they're by students or by faculty, have to be presented for approval. In addition to that, there were a couple policies that we already went through for the first reading. the first reading last month. And after much deliberation and some questions from a perspective of the changes that Strauss Esme has made, I would like to propose that, Jack, we could postpone the second reading for Policy eleven, forty, fifteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-three. And that's due to the fact that we did request some legal counsel on the language, and we want to give Stephen some time to review those and make it. So it's eleven, forty, fifteen, twenty-three.
And you want it to twenty-four, twenty-three?
Twenty-four, twenty-three.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you.
Could you just expand a little bit more on those two policies and what is being reviewed?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry about that. For the bilingual, which is twenty-four, twenty-three, is a bilingual education. I think we've received some clarification from Strauss Esme, but there has been some noise across multiple school districts around the references within the policy not being accurate with the legislature. So we just want to make sure that whatever we have in our policy is most accurate and most feasible for the school district. There were some questions in regards to how many years we can serve a bilingual student versus not, and I think the language is kind of off, so...
Off against the statute or like...
It says that the statute doesn't quite apply in this situation versus that situation. I think we just want more clarification to clearly say, I will manage that particular program. And then Policy eleven, forty is a policy associated with educational equity and affirmative action. I think we're very comfortable with the changes to affirmative action language. However, around the educational equity, we do have some questions and concerns. The ask is to remove the word equal and replace everything with equitable. And my ask was that we keep both of those words in our policy at the local level, but there's some concern that the New Jersey State Board has issued some other guidelines. So I just want to make sure that we state that clearly. And then the third one is fifteen, twenty-three, it's in the same space around the equity and equitable aspect of it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Area none. Human Resources Committee met way back on April ninth of twenty-twenty-four.
Wait a second. Do we need to actually motion to remove those or to put those on hold or...
We're just supposed to...
Those are going to...
They're just supposed to...
We're moving the motion. Thank you. So as I said, the HRC met back on April ninth, twenty-twenty-four, and it was so far ago that we talked about four candidates to be interviewed for the Director of Cultural Services, but as you heard before, we now have one, and she's in fact... So congratulations again. Second thing we talked about is the hiring of an assistant VA. The posting went out on April second with a deadline of April twelve. Jack will be leading the search with Kelly's assistant. Assistant, currently there's a consulting from a consultant from a previously approved company filling in, and she's paid through a purchase order. She would be hired as an interim at this meeting and paid through payroll. The other items that we discussed at that meeting were related to personnel. This time I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-twenty-four, Executive Session One Meeting, March nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, Executive Session Two Meeting, and March nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, Business Meeting. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minute, to accept the minutes. All those in favor, stay out. All those opposed, same right. Motion carries. Board acknowledges correspondence to the Board. We now move to action agenda items, public comments. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the Board regarding action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the Board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, Board employees, and Board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the Board discourages inflammatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as a question and answer session, but rather offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the Board. The Board may need to refer an issue to the Superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session.
My name is Richard Speck, one eighty-seven North Street. First comment is on number two point four, which is the Science Olympiad approval for travel. Mary had mentioned about what that, that they came in first in the state of New Jersey out of twenty, it turns out that's out of twenty-seven teams. They actually placed first out of twenty-three events, or first in eleven out of the twenty-three events, so almost half the events they came in first. The way they score it is they take your rank and they add those up, and so the lower score that you get is better, and they got sixty-eight, and the next team was a hundred and one. So it was pretty impressive, and I just want to wish them well and the coaches and the students they're calling. Second comment I have is on Agenda Item three point three eight, which is about the School PR Association Survey Study. I just wanted to say that congratulations, I'm glad things are moving forward with that. The one ask I do have about that is to ensure that as they do that, that they include all community, not just school community people. There are times I can sign up for the, to get the agenda notifications for the meetings, but there's a lot of other stuff that goes on that's not, and doesn't really go into Montgomery News usually, and so it's very hard sometimes to kind of get a sense of what's going on. And so I think that through this survey, you'll have a better sense of things, and so I just hope you'll be able to include everything, because there are also people that don't go to, have students, but not in our district, so. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Before we vote tonight, I would like to raise an issue about last month's votes, based on the very clear guidance from the School Ethics Commission opinion dated December nineteenth, twenty-twenty...
Is this on an action item?
It's gonna get to it, if you just give me one second. Otherwise I'll have to do it in reverse. You'll understand what I'm getting to. I'm getting to tonight's action items. Can I continue?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think you'll understand when I get to it. Based on the very clear guidance from the School Ethics Commission opinion dated December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, it appears that Board members Spence Wallace, Franco Herman, and Harris should abstain on action items three point five budget, three point six school district accountability, and four dot O personnel, and possibly sections three point one six and three point one seven. So tonight, a diligence is taking and that the Board members Harris and Franco Herman abstain from the following that I believe they should abstain from. One point three, I'm not really sure what we're doing with that based on the discussion we just had. It's Policy eleven, forty, and fifteen, twenty-three. I wasn't, couldn't really hear back there what you decided on that. Three point five budget and four dot O personnel, which brings me to my next point related to this matter. Who or what is the oversight holding these Board members accountable to the School Ethics Commission opinion? Thank you.
Hi. Would you consider later start time in action item since it was under the letters from a person or no?
It is not an action item.
Speak up, yeah, not a problem.
Any other public comments on action items? Any other public comments on action items?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Francine Pfeffer, five Mystic Drive, Skelman, New Jersey. I was here last month when you did the budget conversation, and I just wanted to comment that why are we leaving six hundred eighty-four thousand dollars approximately of health insurance adjustment? That's money that the district could be putting in the budget.
Is that, is that an action item?
Isn't the budget an action item?
Okay. Make it true. Thank you.
I have never heard a school district say it has too much money ever in my life. Have I ever heard a district say they have more money than they need? I know there's about seventy-eight hundred homes in this town, units. I know that's not, this is not good math, but dividing that number of homes by that money is about eighty-eight dollars per household, which is about eight dollars a month. For eight dollars a month, everybody moves to this town because of the quality of the school district, and eighty-eight dollars for an average household, like I said, that's not perfect math, but let's just say eighty-eight dollars for a household is a very low amount of money. And the problem for people who don't understand school funding behind me is that the two percent property tax cap that we have, that two percent is based on last year's tax levy. So I know this district has banked cap in the past, and now we're not taking over half a million dollars we could, so every year we are losing money because of how that compounds upon itself year after year after year. And I just really question for future reference why the Board would say, we don't want to take extra money that the state allows us to take. The variations in school funding over the past two years, there are just, we are lucky here in Montgomery that we didn't lose vast sums of money, but we never really know how that funding formula will work out for next year. There are fluctuations this year, there are districts that lost so much money. So I would like to encourage in the future that the Board of Education take every single dollar that is available to it within that two percent property tax cap. Thank you.
Hello, Barbara Preston, the Montgomery News. I have a question regarding Janet Church just made some comments about an ethics decision, and my question is, I did an Oprah request for that decision, and I was told that the press could not have it, but I'm wondering how members of the public were able to get the Oprah request, but the press cannot get it. That's my question. I see the attorney's here tonight, so.
Any other comments on action items? Area none, public portion of action item comments are closed.
Turn to the block one. Any items you'd like to address?
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Speck, and yes, looking at ways to have this scope survey available for all community members.
What about the board? Would I make that a question?
I don't know. I was like, for board members...
So for the healthcare adjustment, I understand it was out there. After discussion with the board, we knew some people can speak to that if they'd like to, it was determined that we're not using the healthcare adjustment this year.
I know I questioned it when I spoke personally. I guess the other board members have different opinions, so maybe they could share why they're...
It seems to me that that was to avoid raising property taxes even further.
That was the general consensus, yes. It was proposed, an amount was proposed, it wasn't the six hundred, but it wasn't nothing. Okay. There was discussion on the side once the board, and the consensus was reached, I think, with Marty before that we weren't going to be raising taxes.
Hopefully that explains it.
That was general consensus.
General consensus.
Yeah. And the budget looked well, it wasn't, it wasn't...
We did get an action item.
That's reasonable. I, can I ask, our attorney is here, so was it Janet Church, Church product? Question of whether or not two board members should be voting on one, three, three, five, and four, zero, because of the legal finding? Can you say something about that?
The question you're asking is, the two of our board members, whether or not they're permitted to vote on certain action items?
Yes.
I've advised them as to what they need to accuse themselves of and what they may vote on, and they're gonna act on that advice this evening.
Any other questions? All right, at this time I will entertain a motion to move action agenda items one point zero through four point eight, with the exception in one point three, eleven, Policy eleven, forty, Policy fifteen, twenty-three, Policy twenty-four, twenty-three, Policy twenty-four, twenty-three, R.
So Mr. President, if I could, with regard to eleven, forty, fifteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-three, if we could have a separate motion to suspend those policies, postpone that, then we can vote on that separately and then the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
So just like a tableau motion, we need a separate motion and a second to postpone those policies until our review.
Please. So I'll ring to state my motion. We will entertain a motion to accept Agenda Items one point zero through four point eight, with the exception of one point three. Is there a motion? It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Agenda Items one point zero through four point eight, with the exception of one point three. Mr. Trent, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Fielek.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Willaka Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's carried.
Thank you. With regard to one point three, at this time I'll entertain a motion to accept one point three, two, two, two zero, two zero zero, and two, two, zero, zero, R.
So the motion is to delay...
The motion is to postpone, which means that they will come back to you after our review. Eleven, nope, postpone eleven, forty, fifteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-three, Policy and Regulation.
Yes, I'll state the motion. Motion is to postpone eleven, forty, fifteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-three, R. It's been properly moved and seconded to postpone those policies. All those in favor, stay out. Mr. Trent, sorry. Mr. Trent, roll call, please. Question on the motion.
Does the current policy that's in place stay in standing after the review?
Yes. Any other questions on the motion? Mr. Trent, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Fielek.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
I refuse myself.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
I say I refuse myself.
Ms. Willaka Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, and at this time I will entertain a motion to adopt twenty-two hundred and twenty-two hundred, R.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded to adopt those two policies. Mr. Trent, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Fielek.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
I refuse myself.
Ms. Harris.
I refuse myself.
Ms. Willaka Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, at this time, new public, new business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the Board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the Board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of the privacy rights regarding students, Board employees, and Board members, and to avoid... and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portion of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. The board may refer, may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. I'm still Rich Speck, one eighty-seven, North.
We know who that is. This is a really minor item, probably in the global scheme of things, but this room, this room is terrible for acoustics. And, you know, it echoes like crazy. It's bad enough being here, but because there's no direct audio input into the recording, you're hearing echoes on when you decide to watch the meetings later on. I would just continue to ask board members that when you're speaking, please get close enough to the microphone that you can ensure that you're being heard over the PA system, because there's a better chance it will get picked up. And it's especially a problem, there are some people who are a little quieter than others, which I understand, but also when one board member is speaking to another board members, a lot of times faces are moving, and so they go away from the microphone. So like I said, minor thing, but just ask people to try to be cognizant as they're speaking. Thank you.
Can you hear me here? Jeff Grant, Six Ladies and Drive. Theft by deception, theft of movable properties, the accusation. In this country, for most people, we're innocent until proven guilty. Regarding Zelda, I feel for her, it's a long road ahead of her. Hopefully, if she did do something illegal, she owns up to it, and she earns her redemption. This is America. We fall off the horse, we pick ourselves up, we dust ourselves off, we get back up on that horse, and we keep going. It's not always easy, it's hard work, but that's what America's all about, I wish I will. But where there are flames, there is fire. Going forward, all organizations and accounts that Zelda had any connection with will need audit records, labor and management, union, this school. We know Hillsborough is going through an audit and placement. It is a duty of this school board to identify these audit issues and proceed with an outside line. Accountability for all of us along the way helps clarify our judgment and keeps us grounded in reality. I'd argue that there were signals along the way, and the press is responsible. They hold us to account. Our Monty News editor, however, missed countless opportunities about Zelda and the school board, keep them grounded in reality. Now I'm going to make some remarks on Montgomery News headlines that should have been, but never were. School board attorney forces Spencer Wallace gag order lifts. Parents now free to protest by name. Man dressed as a woman reads books to elementary children with a falsetto voice. Parents object to immorality. School board claims in ear. Parents' Oprah request reveals school board directing members to use personal emails to scurp discovery. School board response, not available. Budget item uncovered to fund travel with South African Democratic Teachers Union collaboration. Citizens advise they are Marxists, and South Africa is an enemy of the United States. School board ignores. Parents learn that the school board has been secretly collaborating with Sal Rubenstein's Rutgers School of Management and Labor Relations for over a decade. Parents identify Rubenstein's program as Marxist management propaganda. Parents still awaiting answers. High Tops declares its gender-bending curriculum will be spiraled in to all lesson plans, preventing parental appeal. School board votes through a new contract that opens meeting for parental input. Dr. Stunt spelled Zelda Spencer Wallace PhD credential is questioned. Spencer Wallace and school board are silent. I can go on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Candy Willis, I'm from the Van Halogen Historical Society. I gave each of you a little flyer for a competing event for the gentleman who was up here before. There is a play, but I will tell you that we're having a, it's a bus tour, we're having a morning and an afternoon tour, so you can just have a very full May eleventh. And I personally hope it does not rain. We will be touring historic sites, the three buildings that the Historical Society maintains, and then we will, including the Beatensville Schoolhouse, which is on BOE property. And we'll also be going to an eighteenth-century farmstead. And we will be, as we're touring, we're going to, I'm going to be pointing out all the historic sites in town in certain areas, so it's a kind of a must-come-to. So if you can come, just get your ticket, it'll be a great luncheon, and we'd love to see everybody there. Thank you.
I'm Janet Church from Montgomery. I just wanted to bring up, will the remaining board members or the board in its entirety be communicating the New Jersey School Ethics Commission opinion on board members Franco-Herman and Harris and the restrictions put upon their board participation as a result of their conflicts within the, and their support received from the MTEA? And if not, why not? I'm just going to read from the last paragraph of the opinion. Finally, as a reminder, school officials must always be cognizant of their responsibility to protect the public trust, to honor their obligation to serve the interests of the public and the board, and to periodically reevaluate the existence of potential conflicts of interest. In addition, the only way for a school official to truly safeguard against alleged violations of the Act is to avoid any conflict which could have the appearance, actual or perceived, of being a violation of the Act. Also, along those lines, in addition to the opinion, recently, news came to light about a former board member, and as a result, I would request that there needs to be some sort of an audit of the last three years. Checks were signed, there was potential influence of vendor relationships, potential influence of hiring of supporters in the district. At the end of a review, the community can be assured that either there is no wrongdoing or learned any improprieties. Please be proactive and not reactive. The sleeping community members are waking up. There will be no tolerance for anything but integrity and transparency on this board. The eyes of Montgomery are watching you, and are now the eyes of the entire state. The taxpayers for whom seventy percent of their tax dollars go to the school district deserve better, and the children of this community deserve the best. Thank you.
Hello, it's Barbara Preston from the Montgomery News again. And again, Janet Church is referencing a document that she got through an Oprah request from this school district. Now, Oprah requests are really important, and a member of the press has got to be able to use them to access public opinion, especially when the New Jersey School Board Association Ethics Committee makes a judgment. Now, this Oprah request was released to members of the community, but it was not released to the press. And I did put in an Oprah request, and I get no response as to why it's released to some members of the community, but not to the press. This does not help people trusting the press when they have information, and I can't get it. I do not understand this. It's very, very important, this Oprah request, and I really would like an answer. I really would.
Hi, you can refer to me as a resident of Bellmead. So I think this refers to transparency.
So, excuse me, we are asking all people to sign their name.
I did. I'm a resident of Bellmead.
Will you a resident of Bellmead that does not distinguish who you are?
Okay, you can put down Angelina Jolie from Bellmead, please. So, this refers to as transparency of this board.
I'm accepting Angelina Jolie.
Wait on, did you take anybody's driver's license or ID? I mean, your name is not Jeff Trent, neither, that's not your legal name.
Excuse me, you're not the mic, thank you. Please sit down, please, thank you.
So transparency of this board. If you had let the public know when this, when this opinion came in April, then we wouldn't have this. When the Ethics Commission issued this opinion of the three board members not being able to vote on certain items, you should have let the public know, instead of you went into executive session and discussed it. When are you going to bring it up? When are you going to say something? It's, this was sent to you in December, and we are at the end of April.
I'm Alex Wolfson, my wife Natasha Wolfson, U. C. West Coast. So in January, I came to this board to talk about delaying school start times for Montgomery High School, and I was told that that meeting by Mary McLaughlin, that this is something you guys would discuss at the planning and budgetary meetings. I would love to know what was discussed and what the outcome of that discussion is. I would also strongly encourage that Dr. Mandelbaum's offer to present to this board the evidence for the harm that we're causing to our high school children be presented. That's a standing offer he's made for several years that's been ignored. The other request I would have is that we immediately form a working group to work on figure and now, how do we decrease depression, suicide, poor outcomes in our high school children by delaying high school start times? There's a petition that's been circulated with over six hundred signatures. My wife emailed it to the board on March twenty-fourth, she has not heard back. That's a copy of the petition right there. The data is overwhelming, this is not a topic you ignore. Just as much as we're very proud of our successful high school kids and all the activities that they're succeeding in, let's not ignore those high school kids who are sitting in their rooms contemplating if they want to wake up tomorrow at five forty-five just so that they can get on the bus, or if they'd rather kill themselves. Thank you.
I'm Natasha Wolfson, Alex's wife, Montgomery resident. And I know Alex did present to you back at the January meeting to reassess this issue that's been on the table for several years. Dr. Mandelbaum has done a lot of work, you know, providing you with the research, and he's, you know, been discussing this topic for several years, but it doesn't feel that anything is being done to work on this specific delaying of high school start time to what is recommended by national boards of health, which is ideally closer to eight thirty AM. I started this petition at the end of March to assess, well, two things. Number one, to just remind everyone that this is an important issue in the community. Sleep health, sleep deprivation in our high school students is extremely important to look at and in order to prevent physical and mental health issues. That was the first part of my goal here. The second part of the goal was to see within the community if this is an important issue. Over the past month, I've received close to seven hundred signatures for this petition from the community, as well as numerous comments, messages, demonstrating more community support for this specific issue. So I'm here today to find out what is actually being done by the school board to further look into this specific issue of changing the high school start time to closer to eight thirty AM, which is what is recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, as well as other leading health organizations. I don't know what is specifically being done, and this is what I'm here to find answers to. Is there a specific committee within the board that is looking into this? What options can be done to change the schedule? I know transportation has been an obstacle. What options have been looked at regarding transportation? So this is why we're here, I want to readdress this issue. It's been on the table for several years, I want to know what's being done about it and what concrete answers we have. Other school districts in New Jersey have made the change. Princeton did several years ago with a lot of success, so that's a school board you could talk to further about what they did to manage that. Just recently, I think two days ago, Cumberland Regional School District also made the change. So just want to remind everyone, this is an important issue. It's not something just to lay on the table, it needs to be addressed, and I want to know exactly what is being done to tackle it. Thank you.
Hi, Justin Mayer, one fifty-two, Wilshire. I appreciate the Wolfsons' comments. Something that might be able to be done in the real short term to help address some of the early start times and rise times of our high schoolers is the bus situation. I know that we've invested in some iPads recently, it's a really good tracking technology that should help some of the routing. I still find understanding that many school buses for high schoolers are arriving way earlier than necessary at the schools, oftentimes before the school even opens to let them in. My son sits on a school bus for up to ten minutes every morning before the school opens. That means he's arriving at school forty to forty-five minutes before the start time. Completely unnecessary, and the bus can't leave, it can't go start the next round. So I don't understand why that continues to happen. And now that we have iPad tracking data, there's no reason why the transportation department can't look at the data and optimize the times for pickups so these students can sleep an extra ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes until we can figure out how to adjust a figure scheduling issue. Thank you.
One of the board members had a question on what happens during bus inspections. When a bus fails, it doesn't always go right out. They do have to go after the inspection team, schedule it, and bring the bus to them. Not on every case, if it happens during that week when they're here, if the repair can be made beforehand, then it's done. If it's not, and it takes longer, the bus is out of service, completely out of service, cannot be used. It is legal for the district to take that bus, have it re-inspected, and if it passes, then they turn around and put an inspection sticker on it. That's how it works. And just so you know, I'm speaking the truth, I was a mechanic for twelve and a half years, so I know what I'm talking about.
Karen Anderson, Bellmead, New Jersey. I just have a couple requests. In the documentation that was provided with the agenda, there was a list of consultants that were approved. If you could put more information for transparency who these really are, as far as not just a title, but have an address and maybe contact information. One in particular, some of it you can Google and things just pop up, but like the Social Institute, I tried Googling, and I got a random bunch of information which led me to nothing that could help me understand what that particular topic was about. And looking at the bill, the check register, there is a bunch of voids and replacements. If we give a little background on what that is, so that's my second request. Third request is, there's a check there for forty thousand dollars to a law firm, Brian Gamsza, or something else, if you could give some details on what that expenditure was for. And fifth, I concur, there should be an audit, as was mentioned a few times, going back the last three years because of what's been going on with a prior board member. And you, lawyer, you mentioned that you explained to the other two incumbents that were part of the school ethics filing. You explained to them how they were to decide to abstain or accuse themselves. But how was that monitored? That was another question I heard that I didn't have an answer yet. So that's my last question. Thank you very much.
Mark Under, 1378 and 206, Skelman. Also, I just have a very simple request to start off with. That I know that board members are given a background check upon entry. I think that we need to update that to yearly. Not very expensive, very cheap, especially since we own a police department. Due to what had just happened, it would be very simple to do, yearly background checks. I don't think anybody here has anything to hide, so I don't think that would be an issue. The other thing that I wasn't, had no plans of speaking of, but since the Montine News and Barbara brought it up about transparency and over requests. I agree, but it's funny is that the board attorney sent me a letter on a Friday. I was called on a Saturday about that letter by Barbara. I didn't receive the letter till, I believe it was Tuesday. So obviously, there was no over request, because I think that Jack may work hard, but he's not there on Friday nights filling over requests. So I'd like to know how that happened. And as far as names goes, I really don't care, even though there's some title. I mean, you're a board attorney, that's great, I have no issue with that, I can look you up. But if we're going to, in the future, put I E doctor in front of somebody's name, we need to verify credentials, because it seems that the system is broken, and we just saw it fail. Whether it's true or not, Barbara never referred to her in her article as doctor. So, thank you.
Do I have to sign in a second time?
Hi, I'm still Francine Pfeffer of Skelman, New Jersey, like Rich said. I would just, to avoid you having to say it, I guess, I just would like to point out to members of the public that current law requires that every school district must file an annual audit of the district's accounts on reading from the law, and financial transactions to be made by a public school accountant employed by it, which audit shall be completed no later than January. So I do not think that this district needs to complete an audit, because you already do it, it is part of law, and therefore, I trust that the board is doing the right thing. And maybe I'm a little snarky sounding here, but since there are some members of the public who do not wish to give their names, we have, last time I went to check in for a meeting with my child's school, I had to sign in with my driver's license to print a badge, and perhaps you need to implement that if people here are rude enough to the board that they do not wish to give their names. Thank you.
You have a question from the public? Seeing none, public comments are closed. Superintendent McLaughlin, turn your foreview, any items you'd like to address?
I'd like to adjust the question that was asked with regard to the advisory opinions that were issued by the School Ethics Commission. Those advisory opinions have not made, have not been made public by the School Ethics Commission, and under the regulations, they remain confidential until the School Ethics Commission itself votes to publicly release those documents. And if you have a pending over request here, I'll certainly look into that with Mr. Trent so that you get an appropriate response.
There were a few people here who spoke about school start times. We are looking into transportation, you know, as you are aware, we have triple tier busing right now. And with that, we are very restricted, it's millions of dollars to not have triple tier. You are correct, years ago, we worked very closely, Dr. Mandelbaum is our school physician. I speak with him regularly, and I've been to his presentations. I believe he did present to the board, I think it was during COVID, perhaps. So it is something that we have always put on one of our priority lists. We did go, Mr. Papadou, when he was the high school principal, and I went to Princeton. And we said, how are you doing it? So first and foremost, only a small percentage of their students are bused. So they are majority walking district. And they have a schedule that's called a drop, I don't know the exact term, but they, like a drop schedule. So like day one, they start with period one and end with period eight. The second day, they start with period two and end with period one. So that, because every child misses a significant amount of school to go to sports and to go to their after-school activities, that they would miss, not miss the same last two classes or last three classes a day, they would only have to miss one or two. So for us, that was not an option, to have students miss any time out of school. And we have a block schedule, we don't have that rotating drop schedule. So, but we are looking into the busing and having Orchard Hill and Village bus together, and L M S and U M S bus together, so that we could adjust the times. And remember, we did adjust the times, I believe almost a half an hour, when we returned in full in-person instruction after COVID at the high school. And I'll look into the waiting for 10 minutes on the bus. So we load the buses over capacity, because we know students aren't always on the bus every day. So what happens is, especially at the high school, the bus doesn't have to stop. So the routes are created with a system that has the bus stop at different bus stops and pick up numerous children. So if the bus passes five bus stops, that there's not a child there on a regular basis, we can't not provide transportation unless the parents wave and say, please don't put my child on the transportation so that then we could route the buses more efficiently. That will continue to happen. So, but I will look into the specifics of that. Meaning that, you know, when the bus stops, puts the stop sign on, kids get on the bus, has to wait for everyone to be situated, and then it takes off again, stops again. When it's just passing bus stops, because there's no children there, it decreases the time it takes to get to school. So that's why there's that lag in that wait.
There was a question or a suggestion, and the president has asked me to respond to it. The district's financial records are audited annually. That includes an audit of all of our major accounts, our enterprise funds and our activity funds. Also, board members, while they serve on committees, have no direct access to any district funds. The only funds that they can receive are those that they are entitled to receive as reimbursable expenses under the Boyd's policies and the accountability regulations. Those are reviewed before they are submitted on a public agenda for approval by the business administrator.
And there was another comment about background checks. Anyone who is a volunteer for X amount of hours, including board members and/or employed by the school district, goes through a background check. And it's different than other places' background check in that the minute a person, their fingerprints get flagged for an arrest, the school district is notified immediately. And as you all saw in the letter that we sent out, we were notified of the arrest, so there's no need to do background checks every year, because that substantial background check notifies us the minute somebody who's employed with us or volunteers with us has been arrested.
All right, any items from board members for discussion?
I just wanted to ask the superintendent, when you refer to Princeton as a walking community, does that mean they don't have courtesy busing? Or they still, you don't know?
I don't, oh, I know that grammar, kids get lost, but I didn't think that's true.
I don't know if they have courtesy busing, beginning to that elaborate detail.
Just a follow-up question, I know that there was a petition done, but sometimes it's hard to tell from petition whether the people making these comments are actually in the community. I know we discussed during our communication meeting that potentially that will be one of the questions that we pose in our survey to the community to see if that's a very high priority for them as well, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Hearing none at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved in seconds to adjourn. All those favors stayed out? Aye. All the paws saved, right? We are adjourned.